This evening, everybody ready?
It is six thirty, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from our prior meeting. Unless anybody has any additions or corrections, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I think there's minor correction under the public hearing, Plumbering Platte Oscar Meadows Second. Should say, Planner Albers gave the background. So, with that, I would make a motion to approve with those corrections.
Got a motion to approve with corrections, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That will take care of the minutes. Two public hearings tonight, first is a subdivision variance for Oscar Meadows Second.
All right, I'll just give a background of this one. So, going back to our March Planning Commission meeting, we had a public hearing for the preliminary plat of this proposed residential subdivision up in Northwest Cassin. But at that meeting, it was determined that several of the lots within Block Five, that's this middle section here, were too small according to our city code and the requirements for the minimum lot area, which is eight thousand square feet. And so, the preliminary plat was conditionally approved, with the condition being that the lots are resized so that they meet that eight thousand square foot requirement. But after that happened, the applicant came back and instead requested a subdivision variance because in order to make the lots bigger, it was found that the right-of-way for these two streets would have to be reduced by a portion. I'll dive into the other exhibits here. So this one here, this is the Oscar Meadows first phase final plat, but it really just shows the various conditions with the second phase that are under consideration this evening. So if you zoom in and look really, really closely, you'll see that pretty much all of Outlet B is surrounded by various things that reduce the amount of buildable area. So the green line is actually, what is, and inside of the green line is actually the buildable area, but the actual true boundaries of Outlet B are this solid line beyond the highlighted green line. So there's quite a large wetland over here on the east side, there's sanitary sewer lines that run along the southern edge and the eastern edge, and then there's a power line and right-of-way for Sixteenth Street up along the north edge. So altogether, you can see that it reduces the amount of of buildable area with all of that. Ah, let's see, back to this one here. So I had mentioned before that they're proposing to reduce the amount of right-of-way. The typical standard that we see for these types of streets is sixty-six feet from property line to property line. And what's being proposed here for those two streets is that sixty-six feet gets reduced down to sixty feet. But that's proposed to happen by making the boulevard distance smaller. The boulevard being the distance between the edge of the sidewalk and the curb. So it'll, it would still maintain the actual driving lane width and the regular curb and gutter widths and the sidewalk width. So really just the grassy area between the sidewalk and the curb that's proposed to be reduced here. And so, because this is a subdivision variance, there are a few criteria that we have to go through and make sure that they're all satisfied. We've heard a few requests for a zoning variance in the past, but I just want to point out that a subdivision variance is somewhat of a different approval and it doesn't require as nearly strict application of our rules here. So, staff and consultants did review this application, and we feel that the conditions that the applicant has highlighted do justify having a subdivision variance granted in this case. Let's see, just subject to a few different conditions. But first, I'll go through the different requirements. So, first of all, we have to find that the requested subdivision variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of this chapter. And basically, we felt that reducing the right-of-way width still meets the intent of the chapter because the street width and everything is still being the same, sidewalk is still there, really just the boulevard distance that's getting reduced. Second item is that the subdivision variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable city plans. And so we felt that with that one, the comprehensive plan is still being satisfied with this one. It's still low-density residential, the subdivision variance isn't increasing or decreasing any of that, and it still maintains the minimum eight thousand square foot, minimum lot size that we would see in any other subdivision or other single-family home residential subdivisions, I should say. Number three, the applicant has established that there are special circumstances affecting the properties such that strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land. And so, going back to what I was talking about before, with all the different easements and everything going on, it really just reduces the amount of land that's available to be And then fourth one finally is that the impact of the variance will have on the public health, safety, and welfare of the other property in the vicinity in which this property is situated. And so we didn't feel that this would have any negative impacts on any of those items. And so, with all of that, staff are recommending approval with the, of the subdivision variance with four different conditions. Because at this point, we have a conditionally approved preliminary plat, they'd still have to come back for final plat approval, but in order to do what they're proposing, it just requires the subdivision variance approval first in order to move on. But the conditions are, number one, to ensure adequate space for utilities and pedestrian access, given the reduced boulevard width. No trees shall be planted within the boulevard areas of fourteen and a half Street Northwest and Fifteenth Street Northwest. So as an alternative to that, if they still wanted to have trees, they could plant them within the private lot area, just not within the boulevard. Number two condition is that the applicant shall submit a final plat consistent with the approved preliminary plat and the requirements of this subdivision variance approval. Approval of the final plat is subject to separate review and city council action. And condition number three is that all buildable lots shown on the final plat's middle must meet or exceed the minimum area requirement of eight thousand square feet as required by City Code one fifty-four point one-two-six without encroaching on utility easements. And the final condition is that the final plat and associated civil plans shall demonstrate that all right-of-way components, including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and driving lanes, are constructed to standard C specifications despite the reduced total right-of-way width. So, that's, that's, that's what I've got. If there's any questions from the board before the public hearing opens.
Ian, what are we, what are we gonna have for, we're still gonna have a boulevard?
Yeah, so there'd still be like a distance between the sidewalk and the curb, it's just, instead of...
It's showing in there, it goes from eight and a half feet to five and a half.
Yeah, eight and a half to five and a half feet for each side.
So curb to sidewalk is eight and a half normally, and it'll go down to five and
This may be somewhat of a silly question, but if you're looking at Section Five here, you currently have sixteen homes in there. If you were to go down to fourteen homes, does that allow you to hit the minimum lot size requirements?
Possibly, I don't have that calculation here.
I think they could probably do it if they just took out one, honestly.
Well...
It just wouldn't be symmetric.
Yeah, and I picked fourteen out of symmetry, no other reason, but...
Because the lots are, they're very close from the last table.
I was just curious if anybody looked at that as an option to avoiding the variance.
So, I guess, why, why do the variance on the right-of-way and not do a variance on the square foot requirement and keep the boulevard normal-sized?
Because when we reviewed the preliminary plat, we said that they had to resize them.
So we're not allowed to change the, I mean, we said that, we said that, okay, so we said that they had to resize them. I would rather, if we were gonna do a variance, do a variance on the size rather than the right-of-way, but, because then we could have normal boulevards and have trees planted So, I guess the question is, is if, if we're gonna approve a variance, couldn't it be, could we do it on the square foot amount rather than the right-of-way? And then secondly, it seems that they could probably do it if they remove, remove one lot. And then I guess thirdly, and I talked to Ian a little bit before the meeting about this, is right now our lot dimensions ignore the right-of-way. So, I guess, to me, when I'm thinking of like the intent of the square footage requirement, it's to maintain like open space. And right-of-way, all the way up to the curb, to me, seems like open space. So, in my head, I thought that would be included in the square footage, but as what Ian told me, it's not. So I would, questions like, could we maybe redefine what we consider the lot area due to, from the intent of the ordinance to include that open space that we currently ignore? And then we won't have to do a variance at all? Or make any changes at all? So I'll just put that out there for you guys to...
I mean, if you're looking at changing the road of right-of-way, that's a, that's a different discussion, I think, than what we're looking at tonight, which is fine. It's a discussion the board can certainly have. You know, a lot of cities have different right-of-ways. I know a previous city, you know, ours started at sixty-six feet. You know, when I was in Blue Earth, we had eighty-foot, which was mostly arterials, and we had sixty-foot for the residential roads. You know, we had a twenty-foot setback also, which is not unusual. So, you know, those are all things that could be adjusted for future subdivisions. That's, that's certainly something we could take a look at, but I don't know that we would wanna to do that on the fly necessarily without studying...
Of course, yeah. What I'm, what I'm, what I think, to me, seems, would be, what I would like to see is not necessarily changing the right-of-way, though that is an option, is looking at how we define the square footage of a lot, right? Because right now, it's from the right-of-way to the property lines. And to me, I think it would make more sense to go from the curb to the property lines. So, Ian, sorry, you look, you look confused, but...
I mean, they don't own the right-of-way.
I understand.
It's maintained.
I think there might be a legal question, I can ask the city...
But I mean, for the intent, the intent of our ordinance, I think, is to maintain a certain amount of space. And that is space that is included in maintaining certain density. So, in that sense, if, if we did something like that, obviously, we changed, we could change the ordinance to redefine how we count the square footage of a lot, and then a variance would not be required, is what I'm, what I'm getting at. So I guess the question is, is do you guys agree with me that the intent of the eight thousand square feet, you know, maybe we need to discuss that and see if, you know, should we be, how much space is it? It's like eight and a half feet from the curb, plus the sidewalk, plus another foot? So, it's like fourteen and a half feet of grass and sidewalk along the edge of each property that we're just completely not counting in the, the square footage requirements.
You gotta change your setbacks then, if you were...
I don't think so. I, I would say that we, we could word it, that's for the purposes of doing subdivisions, the square footage requirement includes the area of the right-of-way from the curb to the edge of the right-of-way. And maybe that's a little wordy, but, and, I don't know, maybe, maybe you guys disagree with me on the intent, but that's, to me, when I was reading this, I was like, we're changing this right-of-way, but functionally, nothing's changing with lots, we're just moving an invisible line. And is that really the intent of our ordinance, is to have this invisible line that creates a variance for this lot?
I mean, I guess my perspective on it, if that's, if that's really the concern, is then just reduce the required square footage for the lots. I, I mean, if that's, if that's what you're trying to affect, I, I just, I'd be very hesitant to add in square footage that doesn't belong to somebody into a lot calculation. But if, if you wanted to go with a six thousand square foot lot instead of eight thousand, that's certainly something that could be adjusted in, in the code. I mean, that's, you know, if, if the legislature has its way, they'd cut it down to four thousand square feet. That was a bill that was at the legislature this year. So, it certainly is a possibility, and I think that would be a lot cleaner than, than us calculating square footage that doesn't actually belong to someone as part of a subdivision. Because that, I mean, technically, once that subdivision is turned over to the city, that's city, the city's property. You know what I mean? So, I mean, it is, technically, you know, it's where all the right-of-way...
It's kinda weird, though. It's kinda weird because the property owner needs to maintain it, though, so...
Right, but I mean, it's where all the utilities go, it's where, you know, streetlights go, things like that. So I mean, it's, I, I understand, I'm just thinking, if you're gonna try and make it cleaner, then say, okay, six thousand is the required square footage. And that's, I mean, that might be a solution to this, too, that would be separate.
Yeah, and then on, on another topic, I guess, how many of these subdivision variances have we done in the past? Do we know of any subdivisions that are currently under variance?
Yeah, I think this is probably the first one, first subdivision variance.
I can't recall one ever.
Okay.
I have a, my personal opinions are relevant, but I have a long hatred of variances because of...
It's not irrelevant because you're one of the votes, so...
I have a tendency to remember them just because I, I don't care for how variances are structured. But that's me.
Ian, do you recall how far, I remember they were often, they weren't that far off of the eight thousand square feet.
Uh, yeah, I can, I can look that up here.
Are they within ten percent of the eight thousand square foot requirement?
I've got it up here, Ian, from last meeting. Seventy-five, sixty is what I was showing in their table.
Yeah.
Ten percent.
That's Lot Two through Lot Fifteen, excluding Lots Eight and Nine because they're on the corner. So there's like, two, three, four, five, seven, yeah, twelve lots. And yeah, they're, they're less than five hundred feet from getting there, and then, like I said, if you, all the right-of-way space, you included that, it'd be there. Right, so...
I'm a little apprehensive about including the right-of-way space, because basically, the right-of-way, it's reserved for, for common use, you know? So to start to change and change that application, I think, can possibly have a domino effect and other things. So, yeah, probably, I'm probably more in the camp of changing the requirement of, or maybe not even changing the requirement of eight thousand square feet, but looking at that because, I mean, you know, these nice round numbers are somewhat arbitrary, right? You have to draw a line somewhere, right? So, I mean, when you're within like ten percent of making the goal, again, I don't wanna necessarily encourage pushing that line, right? Because we wanna make, we wanna, we want them to be at least eight thousand square feet, each one. Because like I say, you have to draw the line somewhere, but, you know, we also have to take into account, but, you know, these are real lots in the real world and not necessarily everything's gonna fit, but we, but that's certainly the goal, so...
And tying that particular decision to a specific project, I guess, would worry me a little bit, because three years down the road, somebody comes in and said, well, you changed the lot, the lot size for this guy, why aren't you doing it for me?
Yeah.
And I guess...
Right.
I'm not trying to bring paranoia to the table, I just don't wanna set a precedence with this that we're gonna have to deal with, that, yeah. I don't know how defendable the position we would be in on the whole thing, but happy to look at it, happy to have any discussion you wanna have, but I just probably need to pull a little bit more thought into it than what we can do right here, right now.
Well, do we wanna go ahead and go through the public hearing process and then pick up a conversation on this side of the table? With that said, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has anything they would like to share about the subdivision variance for the Oscar Meadows Second, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and start with your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Les Conway, I'm with WSC Massey. I'm here on behalf of Bigelow Homes. That was a good discussion, and I would, I can probably answer a few different questions. I, I personally felt the eight thousand feet was a good, strong demarcation of what a lot size should be, and, and so our adjustment, taking the three feet off of the boulevard width, if it was the trees that were a concern, we could certainly, there's plenty of areas on this property that we could add that same tree cover. It's about sixteen trees, when you look at how your ordinance is written for boulevard trees, that would only be along fourteen and a half and Fifteenth. All the other streets there would have the same eight and a half foot boulevard, and they would have trees planted appropriately. The demarcation down to sixty feet, there are a lot of sixty-foot right-of-ways, and we certainly felt that the sixty-foot right-of-way took care of all of the requirements for the city. Small utilities would basically be gas, electric, and low voltage would, would be in that same five, five and a half foot boulevard area. We were pretty happy with, with discussing it with the city engineer and coming away with, with this, with this change. The west side of the property has a fifty, a big fifty-foot sanitary easement, plus it has a drainage ditch in the wetlands. Sixty, sixty-six feet were given back to the city for Sixteenth Street on the north. There's a fifty-foot easement, or maybe it's a forty-foot sanitary easement along the west, or along the east border. And then thirty-five feet of a seventy-foot high, high, high-pressure gas main lives along the south side. So when you actually, if you go back to the original plat from the first, Ian?
Yes.
Uh, the backyards along the gas easement in this particular subdivision are gonna be huge. So, there's a big area there, also the backyards on the north side abutting up to the right-of-way on Sixteenth Street are gonna be very big. We shifted the east side to accommodate the sanitary sewer easement that runs along there, and those again are gonna be big backyards, and then we run into the same problem on the west side. Those are incredibly deep lots. What ends up happening, though, is for construction of a typical three-car garage, twenty-five-hundred square foot, we needed about minimum to get things around the house seventy-two feet wide and about a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen feet in depth. And by taking six feet off of one road and six feet off of the other, we were able to accommodate that, and we were pretty happy with the solution. And we're hoping that although those are all good considerations, I think, by simply allowing us a variance on these two roadways, and if we change the condition to something that required us still to keep the same amount of trees for the subdivision, it would be perfectly okay with us. The rest of the homes around the property have big, huge spacious yards, and we didn't wanna make it seem like these ones in the middle were kinda cramped and smaller. The overall density is kind of an important aspect. Because of all those easements, one house may not seem like a lot, or two houses may not, two lots may not seem like a lot, but we did wanna maximize the lots in the, on the property to actually get where we wanted to get to. So we thought it was a really good solution, and we're hoping that you'll be able to approve the variance tonight and let us proceed with our final design and final plat for it. Do you have any questions, or me? Thank you.
No, sir, no, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
It's not a bad solution for the problem at hand. I think it sets precedent, so if we have to deal with this twelve, eighteen months down the road, two years, three years down the road...
I guess what I would say is, if, if it sounds like we're okay with a sixty-foot right-of-way, I would like to consider just making that our standard. And he mentioned trees, I'm, I'm not sure, do we have requirements for front yard trees for subdivisions? We already do, right? So they don't necessarily have to be in the boulevard, but they do need trees.
And I think that was a discussion that staff had, that, and Les, you know, highlighted that it's not a, not an issue for them, they, they agree, we want it to be, you know, a good, you know, single-family home development, leafy, you know, suburb kind of what we look for. To your point about variances, you know, obviously, you know, we don't like, necessarily like variances, but some of the things that Les laid out are one of the reasons we as staff recommended approval because of the conditions. You know, oftentimes, we say, well, you know, sometimes we get variances that come in, there isn't really a good justification for them, because the conditions are not unusual. Here with the, the wetlands and the natural gas and a lot of the other issues, we felt like it did have special conditions that might be allowing it for the variance in this case. So I think that was more of a justification, like I said, in this, in this case, as opposed to some of the other ones that do come in, which I, I agree, we don't wanna have that usage of variance. I think, you know, adjusting, taking a look at the square footages, that's absolutely a discussion I think planning and zoning should have, if it's something we wanna do. And the same thing is, is true with the, the width of the right-of-ways. I mean, that is a, it's a number that is created, and there are different cities that have different whiffs. And for these internal roads, I think it's less of a concern for us, because we do have some roads in town that are narrower than that. I mean, you know, and some of the roads, like for example, Seventh Street, you know, Paul, you live up, you go past it all the time, I do too, because I live out in the northeast. You know, you get cars parked at both sides of that, it's a heavily trafficked road, no sidewalks on that one, and it definitely is, it's got some space constraints. But for internal roads like this, it's not as big of an issue for us. The goal for us is to maintain that Sixteenth Street corridor, because that is potentially the main arterial, it's gonna hook into our main arterial that goes over to the high school. So, just a couple of things I think we taught as staff, is maintaining that the trees, utilizing it, I think those are good conversation points that we can have at a future meeting or, or later tonight if we want to, if we're done with this discussion.
Yeah, I've worked on a lot of developments, they, there are, there are, ours are in Cassin, are, are good sized. Snow removal, things like that, it just comes to, one of the things that, you know, instantly comes to my mind, just making sure that five-foot area, and I'm, I've worked on a lot of them there, and it's, it's not bad. It is tighter.
I mean, I think sixty-foot, to me, like, you know, we're sixty-six, which is common, sixty would also be common, but then looking at like what kind of a total right-of-way would we like to have, you know, the, the, the distance of the road, and then also the medians, you know, it's something that could be examined in that, in that discussion, I think. Because you're right, you know, for us, normal, eventually will be an issue again. Wasn't last year, really too much, it wasn't the year before that, but I know what, we'll probably be asking for it this winter, so...
Any other thoughts, comments?
I guess I would, I would say, rather than do a variance, I would rather us, let's review our lot size and our right-of-way and change the ordinance, and then come back to this, assuming, I mean, if we do it, I'd rather review it and do a change and then not have a variance at all, rather than have to make a decision on this and, and grant a variance and then potentially, you know, have a cascade effect with more people wanting exceptions, too.
Sure.
I mean, if we're, if we're okay with a sixty-foot, and I personally don't have a problem with that, if staff thinks it's okay, and, you know, obviously, we just put in the ordinance, if you choose a sixty-foot right-of-way, then you can't have boulevard trees, that seems pretty straightforward. So maybe, maybe we table this and come back with a discussion on just changing the ordinance instead.
May I interpret those comments as a motion to table?
Unless somebody else has some contrary or discussion to add, I guess.
I'm happy to have the conversation. I, I don't know about right here tonight, you know, I guess a little bit of homework and understanding what's going on around us before I, I start throwing out my own opinions on it would be kind of important, but if there's some value in tabling it and having that conversation, by all means, I won't say no to that.
Okay, well, I would make the motion to table this until we can review the right-of-way and lot size requirements.
We have a motion to table, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We got a recommendation on our subdivision variance. Last item this evening, preliminary planned unit development, Cassin Crossing.
All right, so, another background on this project. So this is for the proposed expansion of the Windsor Court Manufactured Home Community on the southwest side of Cassin. So the request up for us tonight is for the preliminary PUD planned unit development, which in this case handles the rezoning requirement, because the property right now is zoned DH Development Holding, and so for any development... Development Holding, and so for any development to move forward, it requires a rezoning. Now, the PUD is a bit special in the fact that it's, it does more than just simply rezone, it also includes a whole bunch of other requirements that I'll go through later on. But first, I just wanted to show the proposed layout here. So this is, you can see right here where my cursor is on the screen, this is like the southern edge of the existing Windsor Court. And then immediately below that is the proposed expansion area. So it's eighty-seven new manufactured homes that's being proposed here. And you can see two different points of access going into the existing Windsor Court, Windsor Court manufactured home community. And then over here on the eastern edge, you have the pond area proposal, and then up in the northwest corner, you have the common facilities for the tenants of the manufactured homes. So a storm shelter and the community room space right here where my cursor is. Let's see, and just going through the other exhibits here. Let's see. There we are. So we've got some different calculations going on here. So these would be private streets, all private streets, and so these are proposed to be much narrower than the sixty-six foot right of way that we've been discussing earlier, earlier on this evening. This one here, let's see. This one is a schematic showing the, what is this? It's on the right page here. Okay. This one here is the public water main that's proposed. So it would go from the very edge of Manorville Avenue South, the south part of Highway Fifty Seven right here, and then across the southern edge here, and then linking up into the proposed street network up here. And then ultimately, since we're planning ahead for future development even further to the south, you'll see that there's connection points that would go out there in the future. And then this one here shows the proposed private water main, so going underneath the street network to access each of the new manufactured homes and the common areas up there. And this one here shows the proposed network of, let's see, sanitary sewer lines. So again, kind of going underneath the proposed street network and then leading out, out to the northeast section out here where my cursor is. And then this one here is a proposed lighting plan. So you can see throughout the subdivision, they've got some proposed street lights just to provide, you know, lighting, of course. Let's see. Next exhibit here is a landscaping plan. Staff reviewed this and we felt that it was lacking in detail, so we would like the applicant to come back with a more detailed landscaping plan for the final PUD submittal, assuming that this preliminary version gets approved. And then going back to the approvals that have already happened, the city previously approved a plat of this entire city-owned parcel, so it extends all the way out here to this, this road behind the cemetery, and all the way out to this area over here. So it's just this Lot Two of Block One that's proposed for the newest manufactured home expansion. Lot Three is mostly a wetland that the city would continue owning for the time being. And then Lot One is a future, it could be developed at a future date. There's just some complications that would come with developing it just because of the high cost of extending utilities out there. So that'd be something for the future, I suppose. And then this exhibit here, in the past, we've talked about a proposed park for the southwest part of town, just because there aren't really public facilities existing right now. And so you can see here, this rectangle here is a one acre scale city park, kind of at the southwest corner of the new manufactured home subdivision where it would be. And then there's room, should this area to the south ever come into city limits, the park could be expanded into that area as well. And then this line here is a trail corridor, so it would connect the park up to the Maple Grove Cemetery, which ultimately goes out to Eighth Street Southwest, which will have additional trail corridor constructed going out to Manorville Avenue South, Highway Fifty Seven. All right, and now I'll just go back into the staff report sections, talk about some things that I've written in there. All right, so with this PUD, there's a few different things that our code says that we should be considering for approval. One is the compatibility of the PUD with the standards, purposes, and intent of the chapter. Two, the consistency of the PUD with the comprehensive plan's vision.
I think you've got it zoomed a little bit too much there.
Oh, sorry, I'm not on the right page.
That's all right.
Two, the consistency of the PUD with the comprehensive plan's vision, mission, values, and policies. Three, the impact of the plan on the neighborhood in which it is located. Four, the adequacy of internal site organization, uses, densities, circulation, parking facilities, recreational area, open spaces, sidewalks, trails, buffering, and landscaping. And number five is other factors as the city deems relevant. So with all of that, just a few things to highlight, the manufactured homes, they are, there is a section of the city code that talks about different lot size and setback requirements. Comparing the PUD submittal to those requirements, those requirements are largely being that five thousand square foot minimum lot area, a twelve foot distance between manufactured homes, and a setback distance of ten feet from interior streets is what the code says for that. I had mentioned a narrower, narrower right of way, thirty-five feet is proposed here, which is also consistent with our city code's requirements. Again, they would be private, so they would be maintained by the property owner, it would be the property owner's responsibility to maintain them, not the city's. And so one of the conditions of approval that's being proposed is that there should be a maintenance agreement in place going forward, pretty consistent with other PUDs and private streets that we have throughout the city. Now, just getting into several of the comments that the city engineer had, the city engineer commented that there weren't any storms through improvement information, there's stormwater reports that were submitted. There's a document, the documents show a pond, but there is no other like outlet information provided. So just several more items that would be required going forward, going into a final PUD submittal. Let's see, other items, we would need more easement information for the water main extension across the private property to the east. I had shown that on one of the exhibits, going out to Manorville Avenue South, Highway Fifty Seven. He also mentions that the water main, water main needs to provide fire protection and therefore it should go through the center of the community. Right now, it's not proposed to do that, it was kind of at that southern edge. He recommends that the fire chief takes a closer look at that. And the electric supervisor commented that this is in Peoples Co-op territory right now, but the city will be looking at bringing that into our territory in the future. Just several items that have to happen in order for that to take place. Let's see. And now getting into the conditions that were, that staff recommend going with approval of this preliminary PUD. One is that the manufactured home community should comply with all the requirements stipulated in the city code section that has to do with manufactured home communities. I included that in the packet for you all to take a look at. Let's see here. Number two is that, is the maintenance agreement that I should talk about for the private streets. And number three is that the applicant should address the comments from city staff and consultants before they come back to the final, for the final PUD submittal. So that's what I've got, if there's any questions from the board.
You've got a stub for a southern road here, and we kind of talked about, or a southern exit from this, that, I guess we talked about a few of the options as to where that road may go. Do we actually have a plan for that particular?
At this time, no, I haven't seen any like
Okay.
concepts for that area to the south to be developed.
Well, but isn't that one of your exits or your egresses out of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
But it's really not an egress because it doesn't, it's not like you can get anywhere on that road.
Not today.
Okay. Should we do something about that? Because otherwise, you're forcing these eighty-seven, or I guess two people per unit, that's a hundred and seventy-four people through, you know, the northern exit there.
There's two exits.
There's two, there's one here and then another one over here.
Okay.
Which would be in line with Casson Meadows or even the Jeter Court currently. But good point about that, something for future planning, take a look at that southern exit for sure.
In that same vein, I was curious why there wasn't any provision for a western exit, because it seems like the western property would be more likely developed and easier to get a road out to than the south.
Oh, sorry, other way.
That's not really.
That's not really what it's guided for right now. So I think the concept, I mean, we certainly could take a look at that as far as the final PUD, but right now that area is, you know, it's, it's not guided for this type of PUD
One thing that we had discussed though, as staff level was recommending some provisions in place for pedestrian facilities to access both the trail that's proposed to go along here, and then the public park, which would be down here in this corner. So if they were to add some sort of pedestrian facilities at this diagonal angle right there, and then up here closer to the common areas, I think that could help at least with the pedestrian access to the western development as that happens, that would help.
So the trail would be constructed as part of, as part of this plan?
Not as part of, like, what the applicant wouldn't be building it. It's just part of the city and our discussions that we've had with the applicant and the need for a future park in this area. That's something that the city has offered to implement.
So as this builds out and fills in, is that something the city will have to be preparing for is to put that park facility in?
Yeah.
Like in the short term?
Well, I mean, in the short term, we may not have it right away. I mean, that, I mean, I don't know, we can speak to the applicant about what he thinks is the timeline for how this fills in, I don't know. You know, I mean, it could fill in very quickly, I mean, it seems like a popular type of housing because of the affordability aspect of it. But at the same time, I mean, as it develops, we'll know a little bit more of, you know, we know that we need a park on the south side, you know, on the east side of Fifty Seven, you've got a private development that has a very small, you know, kind of parklet. You know, we know that we want to have a city park for this area, especially as it develops to even further south and to the west side. So we do think that this would be an attractive proposal for us to go get some grant funding as we did for the Frontage Road Trail, to bring that trail into the cemetery area, bring it to the south and then hook it into that park.
Speaking of the cemetery, is there some sort of screening that's going to be between this lot or this parcel and the cemetery, or is there already something there?
Well, there's screening on the, so currently, there's screening from the current Windsor Court on that, between the cemetery and there, and that's something we can certainly discuss with the, I mean, they do have, would you stop scrolling for a second there, Ian? There you go. That's perfect. You do have that green space, which kind of is the buffer between the cemetery to the north there and then the homes themselves.
Yeah, I can see they got all those rows of trees
Well, so.
Kind of adjacent to the existing court.
Sure.
So I was wondering, maybe they'd continue that along between the cemetery.
Yeah, and I think that might be something we'd look at, maybe if a row of trees along the north side of that common building would be, would be a possibility, because I think that's kind of, or some kind of screening, like, we have a, we have a nice screening fence type of thing there, you could run that along the top of there too. Something we would talk with the applicant about. It's not a, not a huge concern there, because yeah, we want to make sure that that's maintained if possible.
If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing if anybody has anything they'd like to share in the preliminary PUD for Casson Crossing, if they'd be kind enough to come
Craig Hanson, six four six two eight, Two Hundred and Fortyth Avenue. My first question is, and I know this is just a preliminary, but I noticed you said something about running a main hydrant line from the east. If that happens, most likely would probably plow right into some main tile lines that are draining a substantial amount of farmland there. If that happens, are there provisions to fix that so that water doesn't start backing up into farmers' fields and stuff? I mean, would they reroute the tile so that it would have an outlet somewhere?
Not at all.
Okay, yeah. No, sir.
How deep is the hydrant main line usually?
You know, I don't know if you have an idea on that, Mike, what you're thinking there, or what your, your concept would be for that? I mean, I know typically for us, it ranges, it depends on the soils a little bit. You know, I mean, you might have something that's six feet deep, you might have something that's eight feet deep. I don't know exactly if you've done borings out there, Mike, if you have any idea or no? Not yet.
Our engineers here, do we know the depths, the proposed depths of that?
Yeah, Les, you're probably better question, sorry.
The minimum requirement is seven to seven and a half feet, and to get through that area, it would just be main lined through there at about seven and a half feet. And to answer your question, if you do rip into it, it would have to be the contractor's responsibility to patch those, and I'm assuming those drain tiles are probably closer up to three. The other, three or four feet, yeah.
The other thing is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the other piece is that we have a attorney's title opinion, we do not have a policy, and there are no easements shown through the parcel for drain lines or drain tiles. A lot of times, those are done between farmers and are not recorded. So I don't see anything through this EDA site currently, although I would guess that there is tile through there because I see the water running, I have seen it running for many years, from west to east, predominantly ending up in Carter Plains Parcel down, down at the end.
Yeah, that's where the outlet is right now.
Right.
It's kind of, I think right by Highway Fifty Seven there, just south of Ardell, Rio Place.
Which kind of tracks with the natural property of the site. And so I would be more than interested in understanding what's in the ground. You know, we can't really determine that just from borings. We can only tell what the, you know, soil depths are and the bearing capacities and for our grading plan, but, you know, it's important to understand what's there and if there needs to be any easements or things clarified in that regard.
But I know, I got tile maps of our farm, and I can look and see if there's tile maps of where they would run that. Mine too, so if I find those, who would I see at the city? Could Ian make copies, or are you there too?
I don't know, I'm happy to, Matt, our property manager onsite, would be happy to make a copy, and I got my business card here for you to. And I got my business card here for you to, if you want to call me and have any questions about it, we should go over them together and see what they look like. That'd be great. It's a good question.
And the second one is, and I know I'm not the only one that's having just a little question now, when you say manufactured homes, the first thought I had was like homes you have up in South Fork. But these are going to be actual trailer, trailer homes?
I think Mr. Schrader can answer that probably best. He's the developer there.
Sure. Happy to address that. Again, for those members, my name's Mike Schrader, here on behalf of ALS Properties and Belver. All of the homes that will be in this expansion will be HUD code manufactured homes, slightly different than, there's a mix, I understand, of the South Fork, which is between modular and HUD codes. Isn't that correct?
I think they're all HUD.
All HUD. So, those are HUD as well. And then, you can tell the difference because if they have a frame underneath them or if they're built on a perimeter foundation, that's a modular home, and those are craned on. Ours will be HUD code homes, similar to the newer homes that will be there. They all will be multi-section homes in this area. So, they'll be two-section homes on pure foundations.
Okay. Now, when you say two-section homes, are you talking about the ones when they bring the homes in, they bring one half on a semi and then the other half on another semi, and then they join them together?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
And all the units will have garages as well?
Correct. Yep. There will be a zero-lot line shared garage and oversized parking for each of the homeowners with a courtyard and a patio off of the garage for the homeowners. Some will be at end elevation and some will be at front elevation, depending on where they are within the site.
So, each garage, each homeowner will get, what would it be, a one-car garage or is it two-car garage?
It amounts to about a one and a half car, so that they can have storage and mowers and things like that. And then there's parking for two cars at a minimum on the parking driveway. So, it's intended to have all of the parking off-street.
And then the last comment I have is, on the south edge, where it butts up to the agricultural field now, I don't know if some type of, maybe a little barrier, I noticed you had some trees planned for, some of it, some trees, shrubs, some type of fence. The reason being is, there's going to be debris that comes, and dust and stuff that comes off the field on occasion. And sometimes, there's going to be debris and stuff that probably comes from the homes, whether it's a child's toy or it gets blown out into the field or whatever. So, I was just wondering if there was any type of?
Well, we've been dealing with that south edge on our current existing location. We didn't have a fence there for many, many years. So, it's really just the maintenance from the homeowners and the property managers. I do think that we did submit a very summary landscaping plan and some of the things we can do with, you know, with some of the landscaping and whatnot to do that. We continue to work on that. We just kind of put some preliminary stuff in to move forward. I don't think it, and Matt can maybe speak to this more because he lives onsite and has been our property grow up there. Is there a lot of trash that blows into that area, or is it a problem?
Cornstalks would fall, but it's really not an issue.
Yeah. Cornstalks and corn leaves would be the biggest thing, I would think.
We'd just have to plant beans. That's right for the wind to turn the other direction.
Well, I mean, it's something we can certainly take a look at for that final, final plan. I think it'll be a good, it's a good question you brought up tonight, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Here's my card right here, if you have questions. Feel free to call me direct.
Okay.
If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mike, do you mind if I have a question for you about traffic? So, with the, with the current subdivision, obviously, it's more dense, you know, with Windsor Court. What kind of traffic count do you see? Do you see a lot of trips? I mean, how many trips would you, you know, I have had people say, okay, well, there'd be a lot more cars coming through there, even some of the residents that, you know, at Windsor Court are a little, you know, they want to know. What are you thinking you're just going to see with that? Because I think you're probably going to see a blend in your customer base. You're going to have some folks who are retired, who, you know, may not get, you know, may not leave their residence as often, and some people will be working, that kind of thing. So, what are you thinking? What do you see with your typical properties?
Well, you know, we go all the way from properties that have one entrance. We have a ninety-two unit home site in Rochester that has one entrance, and there's a fair amount of traffic flow at that entrance. I think people will route to their natural drive aisle wherever they're going to go, you know?
Sure.
So, if they live on one end of the community, they'll probably come in on one exit and leave on another. And I think the second exit, we had to give up a home site in our existing property to create that other exit, just to give other people another access way. There are two access waypoints into Windsor Court currently. So, this won't be one drive aisle coming in. We hope that that disperses the traffic level. And it's typical, like anything else, you're going to have your, you know, morning drive and your afternoon drive. But it will be a little bit more traffic than, obviously, for the existing community. But we think it's manageable.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing the report, the city engineer commented that, says the city should consider a traffic impact report. Do you think that's, should take that under advisement?
You know, I'll discuss it with Brandon Moore. You know, that was something I haven't had a chance to discuss with him. But I'm not sure if it would require, but it's something I'll talk to him about.
Anyone else? If not, I'd look for a motion, please. I'd make the motion to approve the PUD with the conditions as stated. I have a motion to approve with conditions as stated. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That would be our recommendation to City Council.
All right. Thank you very much.
In terms of starting a conversation about lot size calculations and lot sizes, is there anything you need to note from us to put that on the agenda for hopefully next one?
Well, I think, you know, we'll have it on the agenda, and we'll have to discuss with, you know, with Mr. Bigelow and his engineering firms, if there's any other options they see other than the variance process. And then, I think what we'll do is, you know, I'll have Ian reach out. I mean, different cities in our area have different standards, different widths and things like that. I think we'll take a look at that right-of-way as well. You know, if we're looking at lot sizes, we can take a look at right-of-ways and see what Dunt Center and Byron and some of the others. And so, we'll have to try and have that as kind of informational for you at the next meeting we have. Okay?
Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Anybody have anything else you'd like to discuss? I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.